Okay, sign if I click that.
Yeah.
Can you hear it? Yeah. I'm gonna turn off.
Say, could you hear it? I'm gonna turn it off. Can you open it up again? And how are you doing? So you're good?
Yeah. Yeah. I hear you there. Yeah. God, that's good. That's ten seconds.
I just got really tired of this last thing. I guess I went home pretty early.
Exhausted?
Yup.
Especially when you're doing my break and it's such a bad headache and you gotta put a pillow in my eyes.
Yup. There's all sorts of medicine upstairs.
Yeah.
That's right.
Side room.
My buddy Greg was bothering me.
He's scared by the snake.
Oh, not that.
I just told Greg that we weren't out at the.
You guys ready over there?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand sixteen City Council meeting. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and we will stand and do the Pledge of Legions.
Do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shelley, will you do roll call for us?
Absolutely. Albertson.
Here.
Bueller.
Here.
Bueller. Danforth.
Here.
Mandy.
Here.
Riefenberger.
Here.
Roby.
Here.
Solom.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Tupper.
Here.
Phil Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would like to call Troop Two-O-Nine up here, if you guys would have a moment. Mike, let's go out there.
Well, we would like to thank you, thank you guys, and I think for those others that were involved.
Here to name, but the City of Watertown wants to, uh, wants to give you the two thousand sixteen Community Service Award. With gratitude, we thank Eagle Scout Troop Two-O-Nine for your generous contribution of time and hard work on refurbishing the store stand at the Cattail Crossing Golf Course from the City of Watertown. Thanks, guys. Absolutely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
And who wants to take the clap? This way?
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything to the crowd? Like you wanted to maybe paint the building next year or something, you know? We're okay with that. Yeah. No, you guys did wonderful, so thanks again for doing that. We appreciate it.
Well, just so anybody else know, the, on the, the screen here shows the, uh, the stand, that they completely sanded down and, and refurbished with stain and paint and, uh...
Hey, Mike, can you use the mic?
Oh, we can. I can. Just grab that.
Can I sing?
No, you can't.
No singing.
Anyway, to go back, uh, on the screen is the stand that Troop Two-O-Nine refurbished this last summer. I had the opportunity to be out there on a number of consecutive days, the same days that they were out there, working, and I was having fun playing golf, but, uh, they worked incredibly hard and, and very persistent at sanding down the, the whole, uh, stand, front and back. Uh, they, they, uh, ended up staining it and painting it, and I believe probably sealed it or something, but, uh, it was really, I was very, very impressed when I saw, uh, the work that you guys were doing, and, uh, and it was very, very much appreciated. I mentioned it to the mayor, and he says, well, let's, let's recognize them. So, uh, we do thank you, and, uh, I look at you, young men, and, uh, we're in good hands with you guys out in our community, so thank you guys very much.
That looks great. Thanks. Now, remember, you gotta stay through the whole meeting, okay? No jitters.
It's okay. Yeah.
Mike, what's your question?
All right.
You guys are in.
I gotta, I put a pinky. Bring somebody.
Steve, do you suppose we talk to you guys at the building, the city hall?
Thank you guys.
Thanks, guys. Probably.
Probably.
See you later, guys. Bye. Okay, moving along. I will look for approval of the consent agenda. I'll look for a motion as second for discussion. I got a motion by Bruce.
Second.
Second by Beth. Any questions, changes? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, ordinance number sixteen eighteen dash two thousand seventeen, city budget. This is the second reading, and, um, I will have Shelley, if you want to just touch on that for us. If there's anything, any questions from the council on that? Maybe what I can do is look for a motion as second for discussion.
So.
Motion by Glenn, second by Bruce. Are there any questions on the, uh, on the city budget? If not, we'll just move along. No questions? Okay, at this time, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, ordinance number sixteen thirteen, amending chapter twenty-one point one zero, the revised ordinance of the City of Watertown regarding commercial building heights. Uh, this is the second reading of this, and I just wanted to touch a little bit on it. What we're looking at is, uh, increasing the height out there. This is kinda on the east side of town in the gateway, from thirty feet to sixty feet. We've had many inquiries from businesses and such that need a little more height out in that area. Uh, just to give an example, we do have hotels out there that are of the sixty foot, which are across the road, so that's what they're looking at. So, at this time, I'll look for a motion as second for discussion, then we'll let Shane talk about it. Motion by Mike, second by Beth. So Shane, you wanna just touch, if I missed something on that?
Sure, for, uh, just for clarification, uh, this change in maximum building height to sixty feet impacts both, or all three C districts, so C one, C two, and C three will now have a maximum height of sixty foot. Um, the Building Services and, and Planning Commission, we're seeing several, um, new projects come forward with building heights that exceeded our normal, uh, maximums, and we were having to issue, uh, conditional uses. Now, this will help us not have to go through that process each time.
And your, your planning people have looked at this and...
Yup. The Planning Commission saw it and approved it at, at their, uh, previous meeting as well.
Perfect. Any questions on this?
I, I do have, have a question. Shane, it, it's feasible that you could have a, a distance of forty feet between two properties if they're situated correctly, is that correct? With the minimum required side yard?
Yes, that's true.
You know, I think, it, going back in my Planning Commission days, one of the things we always looked at with the height requirement, the reason we had them where they were was so that it was sort of a trigger. So if we saw something that might be an issue, you know, where you, one of the things we always talked about was depriving people of sunlight, you know, blocking views, that kinda thing. Um, that's, that was the concern that we had. I don't know, I don't know if, if we had those, if we had somebody that was forty feet from the other property, if sixty feet would be an issue. It's just something we need to kinda think about.
It's true.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, ordinance number sixteen eighteen dash two thousand seventeen, city budget. This is the second reading, and, um, I will have Shelley, if you want to just touch on that for us. If there's anything, any questions from the council on that? Maybe what I can do is look for a motion as second for discussion.
So.
Motion by Glenn, second by Bruce. Are there any questions on the, uh, on the city budget? If not, we'll just move along. No questions? Okay, at this time, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, ordinance number sixteen thirteen, amending chapter twenty-one point one zero, the revised ordinance of the City of Watertown regarding commercial building heights. Uh, this is the second reading of this, and I just wanted to touch a little bit on it. What we're looking at is, uh, increasing the height out there. This is kinda on the east side of town in the gateway, from thirty feet to sixty feet. We've had many inquiries from businesses and such that need a little more height out in that area. Uh, just to give an example, we do have hotels out there that are of the sixty foot, which are across the road, so that's what they're looking at. So, at this time, I'll look for a motion as second for discussion, then we'll let Shane talk about it. Motion by Mike, second by Beth. So Shane, you wanna just touch, if I missed something on that?
Sure, for, uh, just for clarification, uh, this change in maximum building height to sixty feet impacts both, or all three C districts, so C one, C two, and C three will now have a maximum height of sixty foot. Um, the Building Services and, and Planning Commission, we're seeing several, um, new projects come forward with building heights that exceeded our normal, uh, maximums, and we were having to issue, uh, conditional uses. Now, this will help us not have to go through that process each time.
And your, your planning people have looked at this and...
Yup. The Planning Commission saw it and approved it at, at their, uh, previous meeting as well.
Perfect. Any questions on this?
I, I do have, have a question. Shane, it, it's feasible that you could have a, a distance of forty feet between two properties if they're situated correctly, is that correct? With the minimum required side yard?
Yes, that's true.
You know, I think, it, going back in my Planning Commission days, one of the things we always looked at with the height requirement, the reason we had them where they were was so that it was sort of a trigger. So if we saw something that might be an issue, you know, where you, one of the things we always talked about was depriving people of sunlight, you know, blocking views, that kinda thing. Um, that's, that was the concern that we had. I don't know, I don't know if, if we had those, if we had somebody that was forty feet from the other property, if sixty feet would be an issue. It's just something we need to kinda think about.
It's true.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, number five, ordinance number sixteen sixteen, repealing section two point zero one one three of the revised ordinance of the City of Watertown regarding restrictions on issuance of malt beverage package dealer license. This is the second reading, and at this time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce.
Second.
Second by Beth. Any questions? I, I can have Justin kinda touch base on this. We've gone through it a couple times, but go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this provision is designed to just address, uh, a, uh, an exception carved out for malt beverage retailers licenses in our ordinances. It would have only, uh, currently only those businesses that are focused on, uh, restaurant type business, uh, provision of room, as well as, uh, current liquor establishments would be eligible for this kind of license, and this would eliminate that peculiar restriction and treat it like every other alcohol license, uh, that isn't restricted by number.
Any questions for, uh, for Justin?
The question I got in the wording is malt beverage package dealers license.
So, state statute lays out what each one of those particular words mean. Uh, malt beverage basically are all those alcoholic beverages not made of distilled spirits, not wine, uh, and, uh, has a certain amount of alcoholic, uh, uh, component, not less than one half of one percent. Okay. Package, um, refers to the bottle or immediate container. A package dealer is any person other than the distiller, manufacturer, or wholesaler who sells. Um, and so, that put all together, uh, kinda gives you an idea of what kind of license we're talking about. I, arguably, it's much more complicated than need be, as these things often are.
Anybody else got any questions? Hearing none, I will look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Justin. Number six, ordinance number sixteen seventeen, adding a new section to chapter two point zero one of the revised ordinance of the City of Watertown regarding the issuance of special alcoholic beverage license in conjunction with special events. This is also the second reading of this, and I will look for a motion as second for discussion. Motion by Bill. Second by Dan. Any questions, or maybe, Justin, why don't you go ahead and fill us in on this one?
Be happy to, Mayor. This ordinance simply codifies what was passed earlier this year with regard to special event malt beverage licenses. There is really, there is no difference substantively between the two. This just puts it in code.
Any questions?
Mayor, I have a question. I, I recall discussion on this, but I'm a little fuzzy on why fifteen days, was that, that was to wrap two weekends in?
Uh, Councilman Roby, that was the previous date limit. Uh, in fact, it's the one that's set out in statute, that city councils, governing bodies cannot approve, approve a special event license for longer than fifteen days. So that is the maximum under state law.
I believe that's what it was though, Don, it was set for, to cover two weekend events, so...
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Justin. Number seven, vacation of public right-of-way adjacent to lots one and two of the west fifty feet of lot seven in the J F Monks subdivision of lots twelve and thirteen of, of block eight. Resolution number sixteen dash three-two, this is a public hearing, I will open that up at this time, if anybody's here to speak in favor of or against this. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'll look for a motion as second for discussion. Motion by John, second by Don. Any questions? Shane, maybe you go through this a little bit and explain where we're at, what's going on.
Pete, can you put the picture and the package up? I, for some reason, I can't access that right now. The picture for item number seven? Okay, so, uh, as you see, the area to be vacated is, um, indicated by the yellow hatched area. The two petitioners, uh, requesting vacation are the green shaded property that is the housing, um, community housing project, and the purple is, uh, Harry's Hot Towels, uh, property. So those are the properties that have petitioned, and the little segment of alley is the remaining segment of a previously vacated alley. I guess I'll ask, are there any questions?
Well, I will say that I did get an email from, I think it's Mindy Workus, and she was concerned about parking in the alley. I kinda think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I think all you got the email, but I, I think she was more concerned about parking in, in the alley rather than that little short alley, 'cause I don't think anybody fills us all that's public parking.
Right. The property that she's visiting about is, uh, indicated on this drawing as nine South Broadway, and you can see that she does have some parking behind her business there, and, uh, evidently there are some public or, or neighboring intrusions into her part, private parking area, and whether we act on this vacation or not shouldn't directly impact her parking, but, uh, certainly, uh, we've indicated the, the owner of Harry's that any parking that's displaced by the vacation, that they should find suitable parking elsewhere out on the street.
Yeah, 'cause we have instructed the police department now to be, be cognizant of the parking in the alley there, that, uh, there shouldn't be. Any other questions for Shane or, or, or Mike? Mike's in the audience, if you have questions.
Shane, when is this alley scheduled to be, or aren't we that far yet, to be reconstructed?
I think this is, it's either on the two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen, um, project for the utility company, and we would pave this block in either seventeen or eighteen, depending on which schedule they're on. We're following right behind them.
Yeah. What's the, uh, gonna be the use for the vacated area, do we know, or...
Essentially, it's going to be, um, well, split fi- five feet for each property owner, so neither property owner gets enough to really do anything substantial with. As I understand, on the Harry's side, that they were thinking about having that as part of their egress for a landing from the upper deck of their...
Perfect. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Congrats, Mike. Thank you, Shane. Number eight, vacation of public right-of-way adjacent to lots three and four in Marina Bay subdivision. Uh, at this time, I will open the public hearing, if there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of or against your opportunity to come on up. Right there. Yeah, the button on, yeah, go ahead, grab a chair.
Pete, can you put the picture up for that, supporting doc?
Perfect. Darren, if you'll state your name.
Okay, good.
State your name.
My name is Darren Lachwa.
Address, kids' names, things like that.
Social security.
Yeah.
And, uh, my name is Darren Lachwa. I'm on, um, here on behalf of the Dakota Sportsman, and myself as being a sportsman, and, uh, we, we don't see any benefit whatsoever to vacate this property. Um, it's an access to the lake, access to that, that body of water, and, uh, we feel that it's, it's utilized, and it has been in the past, and hopefully in the future, it always will be, uh, for people to enjoy the, the fishing and, and the outdoors. So, by vacating it, it does, there's no benefit whatsoever to the, to the public.
Anybody got any questions for Darren while he's up there?
Darren, you said it's an access to the lake. Is that a...
It's not.
Is it a defined access, or is it one that's being used as access to the lake?
No, it's not, it's, it's not stated or defined, uh, access, and it's not a maintained access by, by anyone, but it's still an access that, it, it's, it's a legal access to that body of water.
Yeah, I believe that's, uh, that is a, a right-of-way that was, was platted in there, was it not, Shane, for a road?
Yes, it was platted back in the late fifties, early sixties.
Right, so my question is, I guess I'll throw it out there, if we vacate that, the only access people would have is they'd have to park on the road beyond that, and they'd have to walk along the shoreline to do any fishing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's what you're saying.
Shoreline along there is pretty steep, too, if I remember right. I haven't been out there for a while, but I do believe it is pretty steep, so...
What, what kinda access is it getting for the public? Are there a lot of people fishing off that point?
I, I've received a number of calls over the last couple days of people that are, have an issue with this, so... It, you know, we just don't have a lot of public access around Lake Compesca anymore. There's not a whole lot left. Uh, you know, you got City Park, Jackson Park, half of City Park is for swimming. Uh, you know, I just hate to give up a whole lot more access around the lake, so...
I, I realize the lake is very low right now, but, I mean, I was out this afternoon, and that's essentially a slough or swamp out there right now. I mean, are, are peop- do people use that and then walk around the other side of the point for fishing? I mean, there, there's no fishing that's gonna be going on in there right now, as low as it is.
Right, no, and, and, I mean, that's the way it is all over the place, you know, it's a dry year, so, but there's, there's many years when it is full, and that's a really good crappie fishing area. And so, to take that away, you know, especially if there's, you know, some kids growing up in that area, and they wanna ride their bikes down there, or there's just a number of regions, but there's no benefit to vacating it, to the public, and that's what it comes down to, is, is, is it getting used right now? I don't know. But, you know, once you vacate, it's forever, so, I mean, no one will ever be able to enjoy that, uh, forty, fifty, hundred years from now, so it, there's no benefit whatsoever to the general public.
It is. You go down there in the spring, most every year, you'll see it just lined with people catching crappie, having fun.
And I will say this, you know, once you vacate it, and, um, even though you can walk along the shoreline of anybody's house on, on the lake...
It doesn't happen.
You don't feel comfortable doing that, you know, so I just wanted to throw that at you. Anybody else wanna speak in favor of or against this? Thanks, Darren. Yeah, Mick.
I would also be opposed to it. Uh, my memory's a little...
State, state, state your name, will you, Mick?
Uh, Mick Stanton, Watertown, South Dakota. But I would, I would speak against vacating it, and, and mainly for the reason that vacation is permanent. It's, it's a city access at this point, and whether one person accesses it or a hundred people a year access it, shouldn't make any difference. It's a public access. The only person that's gonna benefit from this is going to be the owner of the two lots over there. Uh, I've heard that some of the problems were party kids, you know, using it for a party, and driving around in it, and so on and so forth. But I remember back to when we had an area like this between Lunkers and City Park, that whole area was open there. I parked there many times, you know, fishing in the evenings. There were lots of people that were out there. But once it was built on and such, people just continued doing that. But that was one of the last public access areas that we had, you know, for the shore fishermen. I got a boat, it's not gonna help me at all. But, but it's a great little spawning area there. I do remember back a number of years ago, Mayor Jensen was our mayor at the time, when the front end of it plugged up with, uh, with gravel and sand. Now, Marina Bay actually is part of the city back here, and so they went out and opened that up out there, uh, because that is one of the bigger spawning areas on Lake Compesca right now, too. In the spring, you know, it's warmer water back there, it fills with crappies, a lot of different fish back there. And I question, if we lose this access here, how are we gonna get out there with a dredge to do that this next time around? Now, you can get access on the south side here, but it's not as easily accessible as it is on that north side over there. So with nothing for the public to gain, I guess I would be against vacating it. I would consider, and I'm not really fired up about this, but at noon today, I was saying, well, we could go with a road closed sign up where he wants to, and a sign stating that road closed, open to foot traffic only. But that's not gonna get our caterpillar down there to get the sludge out. And at that time when we do that, it's maybe great for the guy that wants to take his grandkids down there fishing, but what about the guy in a wheelchair? You know, that could drive down, you know, and get out and fish, so, I don't know, but...
Okay, thanks, Mick. Uh, i- if there's any more wanna speak in favor of or against this, your opportunity. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I'm gonna look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Randy, this is to approve, to vacate. And second by Brad. Okay, it, uh, I'm gonna open it up for discussion for you guys.
Shane, what was the conversation? I was at that Board of, of Plant Commission meeting. What was the discussion about how the city was gonna be able to clean the road up to it, and wh- where did that ever end up? I know that they voted to do this, but how did that end up? Do you remember the, or was Rob maybe? I don't know, was Rob here then, or...
Spence, you wanna put the picture on there? Thank you.
I can't remember. Were you there, Rob? Yeah.
There was some concern, I know, about...
Right.
All of a sudden, you stop that. Where does the city turn around? Where does, I mean, where do you start and stop? And do you remember that, Rob, were you?
If I remember right, the agreement was gonna be that there would be a turn, turnaround on the north end of this, uh, like a T-type turnaround, so a person could, oh, where's the mouse? Oh, um, so a person could pull your equipment in here, then back up, out into here, and that way, and out. So, that was what the discussion was, if it did get, uh...
And, and they don't have to do anything like that. We can't put, uh, stipulations on this. They choose not to do that, you wouldn't have a place.
Well, I would assume it would have to be, well, Justin...
Yeah, as, as far as I know, Councilman, um, you know, looking at the framework of laws, you're talking, uh, South Dakota Codified Law nine forty-five seven, and your ability laws, you're talking, uh, South Dakota Codified Law 945-7 and your ability to approve at 945-9, and I couldn't find anything that allowed for explicitly a partitioning of what was requested in the vacation petition. So saying that, you know, oh, we'll get rid of there being a right of road access, but people will still be able to fish, or, you know, something of that nature, you know, carving that up or, or putting stipulations on the vacation. I didn't see any authority explicitly allowing that practice.
So it's, excuse me, so it's an all or nothing, is that what you're saying?
Precisely, Councilman.
Rob, if we, if we approve this tonight, then obviously you have to stop where the north boundary line is and get turned around, correct?
Right.
If we don't approve this and they still build on this, right, to, to now those two areas, those two lots are, are built up and developed, where do you turn around?
We, what we do on the other side, we actually do back out of there. It's, it's difficult and it's unsafe. And, you know, we have been, over the years, I know our people have used that end to turn around and they do go out on private property a little bit to do that. They try to stay off it as much as possible, but, um, it's just the nature of it. They try to turn around 'cause it is safer than backing out with that steep embankment.
Yeah, and this isn't a, a comment for or against it, but the point is, if it gets developed, you've got the problem no matter what, correct?
Right.
Okay.
You know, Rob, you've been here forever and I think when Herb Jensen was here. Was this one of the, uh, do you know, is this one of the accesses that he opened up years ago that were actually closed? I mean, people kinda built on them, put trees on them, and then all of a sudden he says, wait a minute, guys, we wanna have these accesses. Is this one of those?
You know, I, I don't know, Mayor.
That was specifically brought in? I don't know if it was.
On that, I don't know.
Anybody on the council?
I don't think it was, Steve. I think all the ones that they found, I mean, this is public access.
Do you recall those?
Well, I remember when they opened them up, yeah. But they opened them up then, so they really, so everybody knew where they were. So I think this is public access because it's on the lake, but I don't think it's one that they deemed a forty-foot area or whatever, so I don't think.
I, I'm curious, I wasn't, I didn't attend the Planning Commission meeting and didn't get a chance to watch it. I mean, we're getting some pretty strong arguments as far as not vacating it. Obviously, there must have been some, some flavor to vacate it at the Planning Commission. Dan, do you have anything, I mean, what were the arguments that were strong enough to get this approved?
I remember a couple of them that, at the time, that end was just an area that people were really glad to see that somebody bought those and wanted to develop it because evidently kids go in there and I think the police go in and clean it up and, you know, so I think that they were willing to have that vacated just to have somebody go in there and build and be able to stop that being a gathering area. But I think also it was, you know, I think the argument was, what's it gonna be used for? And the argument tonight is that it'll be used to drive on and you go in there and fish and whatever else, so, but I think it was just, well, what are we gonna use it for?
Shane, is there a difference between, now, my understanding is this is actually a defined road right of way, correct?
Correct.
It's not a public access, because those are two different things, aren't they?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, technically it's being used as a public access, but it is by all, all terms, it is a road right of way.
That was the intended purpose of...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
I believe that, that, is it the normal high watermark that would allow public access anyway, as far as on the shore side, is that correct? Yeah.
So, look, I was gonna try to paraphrase what, uh, Councilman Albertson asked for from the Planning Commission. So the discussion was, is that we have essentially forty feet of right-of-way width dedicated to the city. Unfortunately, about half of that is the steep bank down from the top to the waterline. So even if we retain it for public purposes, it's gonna be difficult, if not impossible, to build an adequate road in there. We can build something that can be used for public, but as far as, um, getting the snowplows and the garbage trucks and any other maintenance equipment in and out of there, it's gonna be difficult whether we vacate it or not. We've acknowledged that through the Planning Commission discussion. And, um, so with that, I guess it's, it's how accessible to the public has it been? It's been very accessible because those two lots have remained empty. However, um, somebody has now purchased those two lots with the intention of building a home there and now if we retain that as public access, it's gonna be feel like you're walking through their yard to fish off of that point. You know, if there was a lake right alongside of your property, that would be the same as I would be able to walk down it and fish right across from your fence. So I, I, I'm not saying I'm for or against it, I'm just trying to identify that that's the perception that's gonna happen with or without the vacation. If we don't vacate it, we're gonna have somebody's, have this right in front of their house.
Go ahead Darren, come on up.
You know, to the first comment that, uh, Mr. Albertson made as far as a party place, um, you know, that, that really isn't a good statement because that's what our police department's there for. And, uh, then the next thing I'd like to say is I hope they weren't buying this under the assumption that this was automatically gonna be vacated, because it sure seems to me like everyone's pushing, or not everyone, but there's people pushing for the agenda that, yeah, we, we sold, this land is getting bought by somebody and yeah, well, now we can vacate it. And, and it's, and it's taken away from the public, there's, what is, if, if anyone can give me a benefit to the public for vacating this?
No, and, and I just wanna make sure you understand that there's no preconceived vacation notices out there that they feel is gonna be that way, so I think that's why it, it comes up to the council and I think they have a ton of questions yet. Anyhow, I think they still do. Anybody? Okay, the motion...
Can, I do have a question on that. Can this be converted from a road right-of-way to a defined public access to preserve it properly? If that's what it's gonna be used for, would it make sense for us to create a public access or whatever definition we want with that, but, and preserve it? 'Cause that's what we're trying to do tonight. If you vote against this, it's preservation. So then, my question then is, is then let's make it what it is, that's public access and not a road right-of-way because the road's not needed.
I actually think that would be a great thing to do.
Say, what's that?
I think that would be a great thing to do.
I, I don't know if we can do, I don't know.
Yeah, but my question would be to you then, if, if you did that, you know, like Shane said, twenty feet is really unusable, the other twenty feet is usable, do you, do you maintain the same twenty foot on the top for the, uh, for the access road?
I don't think you'd have an access.
If it's not a road, you don't maintain it at all at that point.
Right.
No, but I mean as a, a public access, you know, to be able to get in there, do you leave the same twenty foot up there? Kinda that, that line?
Well, I think you, at that point, yes, they attack.
Well, you could have a forty foot up at the top for parking and stuff and twenty foot for the access.
I'm just saying, if you're gonna, if we're gonna preserve it for public access, um, then let's do it right. Now, I know that's aside from what we have to vote on tonight, but the next step should be then is to look at it and see what we do with it. Do we just leave it as it is? 'Cause some council could come behind us, guys, and they could, if it's a road right-of-way, and they could abandon it. I mean, they could. So I think it would be harder, in my mind, to abandon or give up a, truly a defined public access area than it would be a road right-of-way.
So Shane, hang on one second, Justin. On, on this particular picture, you've got the, the two lots that are green. Is the intention there to build out into the lake to make that lot, lot usable?
No, um, the corner of the lot that looks like it's in the lake was washed away in previous flood events and then subsequently the owners, um, armored the, the point with the riprap to prevent further loss. So that, it's not the intention for the new owners to recover any of that that was lost previously.
Okay, thank you. And Justin, you had something you wanted to say?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Uh, looking at the original plat, uh, it's clear, it's denoted as quote, "Road dedicated to public use," end quote. And the idea, I think it's a novel one, Councilman Danforth, of, of being able to take what's written there explicitly and say, just keep a public right of access. The problem with that is, uh, the South Dakota Supreme Court, in a case called Herman B., Board of Commissioners of the City of Aberdeen, uh, talked about exactly what the authority of the city council is with regard to rights of way that are in the plat and described specifically. They say, and I quote, "We find that once the governing body of a municipality has exercised its statutory authority to approve or disapprove the plat to an addition to the municipality, its legislative function ends. The land then contained in the recorded plat and dedicated as an alley, in this case, can be used for no other purpose." So essentially what's in the plat is there. Yeah, that, that's essentially what the court is saying.
Okay, any other questions? I do have a motion and a second, uh, on the floor here to approve. So at this time, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion failed. All right, thank you. Okay, number nine, First Reading of Ordinance Number 1619, creating a new chapter, Title 12, for licensing and regulating ambulance services for the city of Watertown. Doug, you wanna come up, uh, a little bit here? I've got, uh, you and Justin gonna handle this one tonight. I just, I think we'll just kinda get a little idea of what's going on. And this is first reading, so we normally don't get into it too heavy, but I just thought we, uh, we should know what's going on here.
Sure. So basically... Basically what this is, is a, if, if another service comes into town, that would be a transfer rig, uh, transfer service or something like that. This is just a, a process with spelling out everything from licensing, uh, permits, state laws, uh, making sure that if another service is approved, that it would be, uh, under the same standard of care, basically as, as already provided for the city. So that's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Okay. Are there any questions that you have for Doug, why, why we're doing this or anything like that?
Has some issue come up? This hasn't been, uh, done ever before as far as this, this is brand new?
Without this license process, basically if a service wanted to come in and set up shop, they could and they would just have to follow state law. There is no city ordinance that would stop them from doing so. And basically in this permit, you'd actually have the, the right to say, does the city need another service? If you do agree that they do need one, then you, then you have the right to approve it and make them follow the, the same laws as, as, as spelled out in this permit.
Right, and it's kinda one of the same, same things that we have on the books for taxi cabs here in town. You know, we have, uh, the ability of one cab company and, and if the need ever arises, somebody can apply, but they have to go through the council to, uh, make sure they follow the same rules.
Yes.
Doug, under some recent conversations we've had, over here, buddy. You said, uh, at the time being, there is some other, another ambulance service that does come in and do transfers periodically?
Ye- yes, there is. They just, all this would prevent them is from setting up shop in Watertown in the city limits.
So then they'd have to just follow through these regulations and apply and...
Yeah, it wouldn't affect, um, wheelchair services, it would not affect any, any, uh, transfer business from coming into the hospital or into the city limits, uh, to do a transport and then leaving with a patient. It would not affect any of that.
So it wouldn't affect anything that's going on right now, so, yep.
Well, thanks Doug, I appreciate it. Okay, I'm gonna move on to, uh, to number ten, consideration of loan requests from the Lions Club to build a picnic shelter and restrooms in Li- at Lions Park. I seen you here, Tom, if you wanna come on up here? Tom has, has, uh, requested that the city give them a loan for, that's moving up and down here, uh, in the amount of $200,000. Uh, what we did, Tom, I don't know if, um, if Shelley shared that with you or not, we did have some, uh, some questions that came from the council. They were looking at if, if the process does go through a one percent interest rate on the dollars and then it's also a three-year payout period. Do you have that up there by chance on this screen or not? Okay, I didn't bring that either. But look, uh, maybe you can explain, Shelley, what we were looking at.
Um, I, I guess just quickly this afternoon, I just did a, a quick amortization schedule to show, um, if it was on a three-year loan at a one percent interest rate, one payment per year, um, the payments are around $68,000 each year that would be due one year from October 1 is the date that I, that I put in there, just so that, you know, the, I did it for the mayor to see what that would do and what that would look like. Um, right now with our two-year CDs, we're getting, um, rate, rate at eighty basis points up, up to a percent we've gotten in the past. And so, um, that was the discussion of why we put it at that one percent.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do, Tom, uh, before we go into a lot of questions, I'm gonna look for a motion as second for discussion on this item.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Glenn. So then I'm gonna let, open it up for questions and they may have some for you, okay?
Sure.
Tom, just a couple of questions. Um, first of all, that, you're looking for the $200,000. Is the, is the real out-of-pocket cost now looking like it's $200,000?
No, not. It, it really isn't. We're, we're looking at maybe getting into that 120 range total out-of-pocket. We now have $60,000 in our, uh, capital funds right now. The, the city, um...
Now, let me, let me clarify something, I hate to interrupt you, but what do you see as the total real out-of-pocket, not just for you, but for the project? I, I've read this and I got confused with this, I got confused last time when you were here. If a person was gonna write a check for the whole project when it's done, doesn't matter where the money comes from, what's the project looking like the cost is?
The, the total out-of-pocket expenses, including the parking lot, if we were to do that at this phase, is gonna run somewhere in the neighborhood of about $180,000. Somewhere in that neighborhood.
So why would you need $200,000 from the city?
We just chose 200 as a, uh, the ability to be, also bring in the parking lot and the, and the concreting of the parking lot, because that, that cost does not include the, uh, completion of the parking lot. It would allow us to bring the parking lot up to grade and it would allow us potentially, depending upon where our donations are coming in at for in-kind material, to get the curb and gutter in, but not the cement actually for the parking lot. That would add about another $60,000 onto it.
So then you're talking about 240,000?
When it's all done and said, yes. We were looking at $200,000 from the city, feeling that we have that $60,000 cash on hand right now to be able to spend to.
So is this, Shelley, maybe you can answer this, so is this the ability to, say the city's guaranteeing them $200,000? If not needed, then...
I'm, I'm sorry, what?
Well, then if not needed, I mean, or how we, or just $200,000 loan and...
A $200,000, I'd like to look at it as a line of credit.
Yep.
As needed basis. Um, what it does for us, we've gone, we've shied away a little bit from going out into our major fundraising, when I consider a major fundraising, anything over $10,000 donations and above. What we found is individuals and businesses are more open to something on a three-year payout than a one-time cash deal. So we would allow, this would allow us to go ahead and complete the project all the way through. We have the block sitting there right now. We have that is paid for. We have the individuals coming in to put the block on, that is paid for. We have the roof coming in. They said, along with other portions of it, said, "We will provide you the material and we will wait till you get the money to get paid for." That would allow us to pay the vendors that are supplying us material in that shape.
Tom, um, I, I know you've got a very active Lions Club, but this also looks to me like to be a very aggressive fundraising venture that you're undertaking. I guess from the city's perspective, I guess my concern would be that, okay, we, we grant this, we, you use, let's say, the full $200,000 and your fundraising, uh, falls short, I realize the property gets turned over to us, by the same token if it falls short, we end up paying for something that we really weren't budgeting or planning on. I mean, realistically, I mean, will your club be able to raise these funds within that, you know, two or three-year period?
Yes, I, I feel very comfortably we can. Our, our club makes on an annual basis between 10 to 12,000 dollars just to our ongoing fundraisers that we have right now. That's just a, an ongoing aspect of it. I've gone out and done some s- small fundraising, what I call, and those are thousand-dollar donations and I've been, very receptive of the public writing out checks to me for that amount. I, I don't anticipate it being a real difficult raising that kinda money. I don't anticipate having it sitting out there for three years. I do not anticipate using the full $200,000.
Now, that was my question, is how do we determine that? Or do we just make the loan at one-time loan at $200,000 and...
That's basically up to you guys. I, my, I guess I was assuming that you wanted that money upfront to pay for the project and that $200,000 was paying for the project. You're kinda stating something different, like you would take it in chunks... You're kind of stating something different, like you would take it in chunks and maybe not all of it, so I, I guess, I must have had a misunderstanding, thinking that was going to be a one-time payout, and that's why we kind of looked at the, the per annum interest rate and asking for a yearly payment on that. But I, I guess you'll have to clarify, what are you looking for? Are you only looking for what you need at a, you know, that we're going to have to do a monthly check out to you?
At this point in time, yes, that's what we're looking for as we go. I, I would say, excuse me, right now, the maximum of a hundred thousand dollars we would take, and we would be able to show the city what we're spending that on, what it is being spent for, and such as that, and if we get to the point where we have, I, I'll give you, for instance, we came in, we're doing the backfilling in there, okay? We had a general, one of the contractors that does excavating came in, I don't know if anybody saw the, the large equipment that was sitting there, or the back, the compactor, and all the big bobcats, and the different things like that, all that was donated. We anticipated an expenditure there. They came in there with their equipment, the manpower, we had Lions Club show up, and so we were able to get, you know, what, ten, twelve thousand dollars worth of budgeted, taken care of and done. And this is the way this project has been going all along. We, we don't want to go in and say and be presumptuous that we're going to have it all donated, and the material donated and labor, but the community has really come forth on this project for us, it's just been really incredible. So I would like to say that right now, if we go with a hundred thousand dollars, maximum two hundred, and we would go on from there, and we'd be willing to show the city where our expenses are going, and what's, what we're doing with the money.
I don't think there's any question where it's going, I guess, I just want to clarify, and, and I'm totally supportive of it, I mean, I think we should go ahead with that, I just want to make sure that we're addressing it the right way, and, you know, is it coming out in payments as you need it, or a one-time loan, or?
I, I'm just wondering if one of the things they couldn't do is if you guys could approve a loan of up to two hundred thousand dollars, and if you need fifty thousand dollars, you get the fifty thousand, but if you need another, another fifty, maybe you need to come to the board and just say, you know, we would like to get another fifty thousand out of there, something as simple as that, you know, and?
Yeah, that would-
We would like to have an update as how things-
I would, I would definitely be go with that, and then one of the things I would like to let the board know too, is that I am at the mercy of our board of directors within the Lions Club, and that money will not be borrowed, I went to the board, said I would like permission from the Lions Club Board to address the city utilizing this money. We would have Thursday an emergency board meeting, just for total membership to say, yes, we're going to take it on, or no, we're going to wait to raise the money. So, I, I would, I would go for that fifty thousand dollars, then come forth for more.
You know, just something I would say, you know, we, we'll do fifty now, if you need fifty later, you just come in front of us and-
Is that, that simple, Shelley, or is that a lot of extra paperwork in your department? What's?
I don't care, whatever you want to do on it. I think the board, I think we as a council are okay to do this, it's just a matter of the logistics of it, to get it-
If we're okay with up to whatever the dollar amount is, can't we entrust the additional dollars through Shelley and that staff and not, not-
I don't, I don't think Town, Town or his group, I could tell you what, I've, I've known a lot of those guys in land clubs for years, when they come to raising dollars, I mean, look at the projects they've done around town, they're going to get it done, so.
Yeah, so I think, Tom, your group and Shelley can work out the logistics of it, and, so I, let's, let's leave it at that, I think we're good to go. I'm ready for a vote on this, I will look for council action, all those in-
Steve, just kind of clarify, so we're voting that they have a, up to two hundred thousand out of one percent interest, is that what we're-
Well, is that, is that what you guys are?
That wasn't what was in the motion though, right?
Right, well, that, that was my question, the motion would be to approve that as presented, that does not consider any type of an interest rate, they were asking for interest-free loan for up to three years.
Um, I, I think if you look there, what I stated was a rate of zero or near zero, and as far as I'm concerned, one percent is near zero.
Is one percent near zero?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be?
That's, that's why I left the near zero in there, for to leave it open for the council to have a look at a little bit.
So you're making this essentially a line of credit, then?
That's how I see that he presented it last time, is that if he needed up to so much money, if they raised money, they wouldn't need to ask for it, so when the bills come in, he's got bills to pay, if they don't have the cash, or they don't have the donations, at that time, they can use this and move, and then keep working on the donation, so I just, that's what he says, a line of credit, so he may, if they choose to do all the parking and everything else, he, he could see it come, getting up, but this one, I'm hearing something like a hundred and eighty thousand or something, if they did it all, and they didn't get another nickel worth of donations at this time, or anything in kind, so, just let them, and you're saying you still got to go back, even if we prove it, you still got to get the board to okay to even use that money in that fashion, is that what you're saying, for your board?
I'm, I'm sorry, one more time?
You're saying even if we've proved, you still got to get your board to go on, to go along with taking that as a loan?
Yes.
They still have to prove that, so.
Yes.
So this would be led in fifty thousand dollar increments, is that correct?
I think it's a line of credit, they just deal with Shelley and get what they need.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's up to two hundred thousand dollars, line of credit at a one percent interest.
Do we need to have anybody redo the motion in any fashion, or we agreed that that's what it is?
I, I think we're okay. Don't you, Justin, you think we're okay on the motion?
And it's payable at the end of three years, is that?
I thought you were going to have it annually, weren't you?
Well, with, with a line of credit, it gets pretty hard to figure out what your, what your annual payment is going to be, so, you know, your only choice is, is whenever they decide to, to pay the balance, or at the end of the three years, whichever comes first.
I have a feeling, as you do, Tom, it'll be paid off a lot sooner than three years.
We certainly anticipate that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, thanks, Tom.
I'd like to thank the council and the mayor, we really appreciate it, we're going to go forth, and this will be a project that the whole city will be very proud of.
We'd like to thank the Lions Club for all your hard work and, and dedication, making the city of Watertown a little bit nicer.
Yeah, it's looking good already, thanks, Thomas.
Thank you.
Number eleven, authorization for the mayor to sign a property purchase and development agreement between the city of Watertown and the Watertown Development Company. Now, you've all have, we've talked about this numerous times on, on how this will work. We do have a, the documentation, I know we were going to get that attached, but I don't, oh no, it's attached, I'm sorry. This would be for forty-nine point nine percent of the property that we were talking about down on the underland, this would be the city will be contributing seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-four cents. If there's property sold, the dollars come back to the city, we put them in our, in our account, where Shelley has a restricted fund, where the dollars are used for purchasing our property for economic development. That's the only change that we had from the last time we spoke about it. This is a good plan, guys, I think this is a, a great, to acquire this property, it's, it's a great thing for Watertown, I think we're looking at the future here, and there's just numerous places and things that could go in this area. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to look for a motion as second, and then we'll see if there's any questions.
So move.
Motion by Dan, second by Beth. So if there are any questions, go ahead and throw them out, I will tell you that Monte and Justin, myself, the, the whole WDC, we've had numerous discussions on this, it's a great policy, and, and it's good to have something literally in writing and in, and in paper form that we can all agree to for, to go forward on this project. So I will open it for questions, if you have anything at this time.
As, as money comes back into that, we perceive that it would, it would grow to a larger number, because obviously, to buy a land in the future, they're not going to be cheaper.
Right, that's what we're hoping for, is that this will come back, it'll go into a restricted account that our finance department will handle, and it'll go for future land development, future land purchases, yes.
Or, or the costs of developing, correct?
Exactly.
So if we have infrastructure costs?
Within that development area, then it can be used for that, yes.
And, just so everybody knows, there, there could be, and very likely would be, some additional costs to the city upfront in some development costs, well, and beyond this, that would be, you know, we would have to budget and, and work around, you know, in the early stages.
Yeah, and I think with the, the working relationship between the WDC and the city of Watertown, you know, we're going to be on board, if we know that there's a, a company or, or some type of a, a industry that wants to look at that area, we, we have that ability to, to bring them in and get roads built and infrastructure put in, so it's a good plan all around, you guys.
Mayor, one question, the money that ends up back into that, that restricted account, then, for it to be used, does it take council action for it to be used?
It does take council action, it'll take council action, exactly what you have going here tonight.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, it was basically the dollars would be spent in our, dollars that came through last acquisitions. One thing I'm missing here, and maybe I'm just not seeing it, in the meantime, that land's just not going to sit there and be empty, I'm sure somebody's still going to be farming it or whatever until it's developed. Am I missing that?
If I may, that's exactly correct, we do have current renters on the property that will continue, one of the things that is interesting about this whole, this whole working together here is that, as the WDC owns fifty point one percent, and the city owns forty-nine point nine, it's still a taxable entity out there, so there are still real estate taxes going, taxes going to the school, and things such as that, so we're not taking this out of-
So the proceeds for that would be split at, that same percentages?
Same percentage.
And so would the tax burden and?
That is correct, yes.
There it is, I guess I didn't see it. Mayor, just for the public's knowledge, do you want to, to state where these funds will come from and how they've been acquired?
Yeah, exactly, the seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-four cents, actually, that the city has are dollars that came from the sale of the, the property down on South Broadway from Glacier Lake Synergy. They've also had some other, you know, numerous sales over there, Shelley, how many do we have, like, three over there that, this is kind of put together? So that's where the dollars on this particular project came from. As far as the WDC, you know, you guys have sold some, some buildings here recently in the last, well, this last year, and that's where those dollars are coming from. They're not jeopardizing their funds in any, in any means or any fashion, there's plenty there, we're sitting good, this is, it's okay.
Yeah, and this does reflect what our intentions were with the sale that we talked about several months ago, with the sale of, of those properties, to, to bring those dollars into some type of an account that for, for reinvestment, so this is just a, really a formal way of, of documenting that in, in our relationship with the development company, correct?
That's exactly right.
I think it's a very positive thing.
Yeah, rather than just a handshake, we've got it down in black and white, we know exactly where, I do want to say that I, I look at this purchase the same way that I would have looked at the purchase that our council did twenty years ago, when they bought the property down by Broadway, they bought it at a reasonable price, they sold it at a, at a profit for the city, and it's just a vision process that they had, that I think is, it, it was very, very smart of those folks, and I think you're doing the same thing today. Okay, so if there's no other questions, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the, Justin and the Monte for working so hard to get this where we needed it, good job, guys, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Number twelve, authorization for the mayor to sign a naming rights agreement for the community center, documentation to be provided at the meeting. We do have documentation for this, what a fun time today, you guys, we, we all, pretty much everybody was there that, that could be there, and the new naming rights on that, you guys got a picture of it for us, Spencer, or not? What's the deal? Yeah, you guys got any pictures you want to throw up there, do you? Okay, go for it. This was an exciting day for Watertown, we had the ability to, you know, we worked for a long time together with Prairie Lakes Hospital, and came to the agreement that they gave us two point two million dollars for a twenty-five year, I think, I think David's got it there, Pete, he's going to send it to you?
I can just throw it up from the KXLGO website, if that's okay.
Perfect. Wow, look at that, Dave, that's pretty cool.
That's where I saw him.
So I just wanted to share with everybody, if they hadn't seen it, if they haven't been out there, what it's going to look like. The agreement, as I said, Shelley has numerous copies, that if you want one, you can be, we can hand it out. What I will do while we're, while we're looking that up, I would like a motion as second for discussion on this. Motion by Randy, second by Mike. Okay, let's see what KXLG's got going. There it is. You can see on there the new name, it's a two point two million dollar, twenty-five year naming rights, it will be payable over five years period, the first payment comes to us the day it's open, the second payment will be October the first, I believe, and for the next following four years at the same time in October. And that's exactly what you'll see, there'll be signage down on the corner of Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street, there'll be signage leading into it, can you bring that in a little closer, Pete? There you go. Pretty nice, we're excited. I think everybody's seeing, any questions, any comments? Hearing none, I am going to look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, and thanks, David, for getting that on the, on the website so fast. Number thirteen, authorization for the mayor to sign a professional service agreement with VAST for a citywide phone system. And Spencer, I'm going to look for a motion as second, and Spencer will get you up, and you can kind of talk about it a little bit. But I have a motion by Beth, second by Bruce. Spence, if you want to visit about this a little bit?
Yeah, sure, we talked about it in our last work session a little bit, we had a lighter, lighter group here then, but the idea of a centralized phone system, and what's nice about partnering with VAST is we're looking at possibly knocking out our, our network needs to get a centralized network also, so it's two birds, one stone, and it allows us to get like a, you know, ninety-eight percent of our phones taken care of citywide, so.
Actually, we also have Brett here, if, if you want to come up, Brett, maybe, or not, it's up to you, they might have a couple of questions. We're excited to get this going.
I'm Brett Ritter from VAST Broadband, I'd just answer any questions, if you had any.
Okay, here I am texting, I'm texting over here, sorry about that, just saying a little something, but I, I think that was, you know, I'm excited for this product here, you know, that we have been complaining for the last three years about all the different things that are going on, and everybody has their own phone system here, and phone system there, and, and we don't know what's going on, and, and since Spencer, you came on board, this is going to work out very, very well. So I believe I have a motion as second on the floor, don't I? Are there any questions that you guys?
Yeah, I, I do, I'm just kind of surprised at total cost, but it that way, am I looking at that right, or on the first page?
Can you put them up, Pete?
So what you, what you do is you, this is just giving us an idea of per phone, so it's twenty-three dollars per phone, if, it's, it's kind of a moving target, so it'd be twenty dollars for a standard phone, twenty-three dollars for, for an executive line, which has UCC, or Unified Communications, so chat features, and, and, what's the word, Brett?
It, it does chat, presence.
Presence, thank you. And then a hunt group, so you've got to piece all these things together, and then we, we actually have it later on in, in the document, what an estimated number is, we kind of, we came up with around two hundred devices, when I counted just before I came down here, is it a hundred and eighty-five, so we're, we're really close with that number.
So what's our projected cost with using this versus where we're at today?
Well, it's projected cost over buying a phone system for every building?
Well, we know what we're doing today.
Right, we're, yeah, when we replace a phone system, we got to replace it per-
What, what are we paying today at for cost of all of the facilities that we're looking at covering?
Figure if you guys were going to replace a phone system, you're probably at fifteen thousand to twenty thousand per building.
Right, and I think we did budget twenty-eight thousand dollars for City Hall.
Twenty-eight for City Hall, probably closer to forty for the police department.
That, that's still not really answering my question.
I think I can maybe, when, when we started talking about this, they, they, they did some working for us, VAST did, currently, we're at about seven thousand dollars a month, and they're estimating this costing a little bit more, because we have more into it, and they were at the probably eighty-six hundred. There, we're going to pay more for this system.
Mm-hmm, they should.
But what it takes the place of is the capital costs, the twenty-eight thousand, the fifteen thousand, what we would pay for a system at the community center, the street department, the fire department, so you're basically sw- So, you're basically swapping capital for operating. And that's kind of what we talked about at the last work session is, is you're, you're swapping dollars. And so, we're going to have to find operating money on a, on a yearly basis, but you won't see that capital expense. And then it's portable. So, you don't have to leave a system behind, trench in new fiber. And when you put another building up, you don't have that expense in the future. So, that's kind of, kind of where we were going with, with this.
Way, way more efficient than, on the other hand, also.
Right. But, but with the maintenance part of it, and we don't have the capital of buying phones. They're going to provide one. If one breaks, they're going to give us another one. If something would happen to the building, we could pick up the phone and plug it in somewhere else and, and still receive phone calls. So, you know, like I said, you're, you're replacing capital with operating costs. So.
I guess I want to make sure I understand this too. And I was, I missed the last work session. So, that, that's my bad. I would have, so 7425, that's the total per device per month? And then we've got 185 devices?
No. No. Yeah, I think it would have been better if it was all just zeroed out. This is, this is the cost per an item. So, an auto attendant, are you, are you guys familiar? An auto attendant's like what happens when you call City Hall. If we wanted an auto attendant per building, and we have 17 buildings, we'd take the 20 times 17, or however many buildings we want to have an auto attendant. This is just a price graph. So, if we have 17 auto attendants, you'd multiply 20 by 17. If we have, those are the phones on two and three. Unlimited long distance is free. So, obviously, that doesn't matter. The premium cloud seat, that would be the per phone cost. That'd be the $23 per phone. And that'd be any live body desk phone. 20, at the very bottom one, the $20, the standard license fee, that would be like a, a break room or a, maybe the pool area at the new wellness center. See that? I got that right? And let's see here. Hunt groups. So, when you call the IT department, it rings three phones instead of just one phone. So, each one, so you would just multiply however many hunt groups, which I think we estimated 17. I don't have the paper right in front of me, but 17 or 20 of those. So, you take the numbers we have in the document and multiply it by the line item.
If you wouldn't have put the total of $74.25 at the bottom, it wouldn't have been so confusing. So.
Exactly.
I thought, let's sign it now and run with it.
I think too, one of the things that we're going to, to get away from, and it concerned me prior, you know, when we each have their own phone system. If you want to touch on the park and rec just a little, you don't have to go into huge detail, but just enough detail, they understand what, what can happen.
Well, the, as far as the park and rec's concerned is, we all know there's several buildings. And they're all, they are going to be tied in very closely. This is going to make it feel like they're all in the same building. They'll be able to page and, and to, to chat and to forward a phone call if it comes in. Let's say we want to have one park and rec number. We could literally do that now. And we could have it, you call the park and rec and you get forwarded to the zoo, or get forwarded to the wellness center, or get forwarded to. We can change, we have unlimited opportunity to change things. Where right now, we're stuck in kind of silos. We have to call the zoo. We have to call the wellness center. And that, maybe that's not a huge deal. But even just the, the, if you think of the management staff, I think of the, the field house as being kind of an administration building for.
Yeah. And I think where I was trying to take you to is, is.
All right, let's go.
You knew what I was talking about. Yeah. When they get, when they get hacked.
Oh.
Help me out on that a little bit. Yeah. Take it, take it from there.
They're not going to get hacked. I don't know what you want from.
We're not going to get hacked on this system. But I will tell you this, guys, that right now, our phone system has been very vulnerable. Our phones have been taken over by different, different sources in different parts of our city. And we need to protect that. And we need to protect our, you know, everything that we have here. So, I know Spencer doesn't like to go into that too deep. And I didn't, I didn't want him to get too deep into it. But this has, this has some ability that we are not going to see that as it, as it comes through your, your office.
I think the most important thing that, we're talking about phones to phones. We're not even talking about the value add of a MPLS line, which I would estimate at close to $6,000 a month, citywide, because we got all these different locations.
Spencer, will this forward to, to a mobile device? If somebody calls, you can set your phone so that it will forward?
I think we're going to have to work with Justin and, and figure out how we want to handle that. I, I'm not sure, yes, it's capable. Do we want that? I, I don't know. But yeah, I would think that at least our department heads who get a stipend, that might be.
I would certainly think so. Yeah.
Yeah. You could definitely can do that. It makes a lot of sense for people that are mobile. If you think of like the, the forestry person at the park and rec, he can now have the same phone in his hand.
So, I can call Rob at 2:00 in the morning. He'll go right to his cell phone, right?
Yeah.
Or he's going to use that caller ID again.
He also has a do not disturb button now.
Spencer, how does this, what does it mean in regards to our current systems that are in place? What happens to them? And secondly, how does this get integrated so that it becomes, when we use the word citywide, they don't want to scare people out in, in, in the community. This is city of Watertown wide, right? Meaning the, the business of the city.
Right.
What does it mean in regards to how it gets, gets implemented then in the other units phased out, the other systems?
Yeah. You know, I think this, this might take, take a little while. Brett's pretty gung ho about getting everything ready. But I think there'll be a slight phase out when we have to get rid of some, our old internet and, you know, possibly, what we're looking at doing is having that server. Right now, we've got several different domains. And I don't know specifically what you're asking, but I'm trying to get one domain for the city. City Hall used to have three in-house here. So, our goal is to kind of get a central domain where when we add a new user, we add them one place. We don't add them two places or three places, you know?
And I think what, what you're asking, Mike, which is what's going to happen is, it's going to be phased in over a period of at least a, a year to get this thing all up and running.
I'm hoping around a year.
Yeah.
So, really, in our realities, the numbers that I asked Shelley earlier are true and untrue because we're going to have some, some lap over the two, which is fine. I mean, I'm, I'm good with that. But as long as we all understand that, so.
Shelley, we, we have no, no bid issues with this?
Nope. Telecommunication is excluded from bid laws, so.
That's correct.
And, and he did go through a pretty rigorous asking for proposals and, and vetting this system before we even came up with, with VAST. So, all of, all of that has been done for how many months? Lots.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Number 14, consideration for the street department to purchase a 2016 John Deere motor grader through the Minnesota State bid. Rob, if you, oh, you're on your way. At this time, what I think I'll do, Rob, before we get too far along, I'll look for a motion, a second for discussion.
So, I'm.
Motion by Bruce, second by Brad. All right, Rob, let us know what's going on.
Thank you, Mayor. We have the opportunity to purchase one of Sioux Falls' slightly-used motor graders. I talked with you guys last year about this. And we're looking at it again this year. What, what the deal is, is through purchasing off the Minnesota State bid, we can buy a used motor grader off of that. And the prices are, are really good. What I found out is basically for the hours used, we have a machine, let's see, let me check here. What are the hours? We have like 389 hours on a machine, one of the Sioux Falls' machines, that is about a $10,000 reduction just in the, the hours for that particular machine. And what it is, it's a 772G John Deere motor grader through Ardeo Equipment, is who we'd be getting that from. But this motor grader would come with, let's see, just shy of a seven-year warranty and 5,000 tack hours, whatever comes first. And this is actually a bigger machine than what we purchased last year. The, the reason I'm bringing this to you now, this is, this is for the 2017 budget and which we won't be able to have this on our doorstep until January 1. But the prices are going to be going up on the John Deere motor graders all the way around next month. By $12,000 is going to be the average increase. Through the Minnesota State bid, they do have, every vendor has the opportunity to put in their numbers. And Minnesota does it a little different on their state bid where you can pick and choose what items you do or don't want. And there's a specific price for each, each line. Say you want snow tires on your machine. And that's how they come up with the actual end price. But the only competitor that John Deere has that does government bids is CAT. And CAT was, in this particular instance, was, let's see, the final price here for this 772G would be $275,893. And the comparable CAT was $327,350. So.
What was our budgeted amount, Rob?
Our budgeted amount is 285,000, which puts us at $9,107 under budget.
Rob, could you touch on a couple of the things on that grader, different size and boards? It's got a snow gate. It's got the, how many wheel drive you're looking at? You can kind of give us a little idea comparison of what you currently have.
Right. Um.
The 762.
Before, like last year, we got the 672GP motor grader, which is a six-wheel drive. The 772 is its big brother. We, we were running 770 series John Deere's prior to the last two years. They are a little bit bigger machine. Size-wise, they weigh about the same. But horsepower, there is a big difference. This one here runs bigger tires, more traction. It does have a taller mold board, which will allow you to pull more snow. It will come with a new snow gate installed on this machine. So.
Is that part of it?
It does have all the things we need.
That's included, Rob, the snow gate?
Yeah. Yep. That, for that price, for $275,893, the snow gate is included.
Rob, I'm not doubting, I'm not doubting your, your amount. And we got 20, 25 pages worth of information, our council packet. And I don't see that, that number in there anyplace. I mean, so, so we're sure, sure, certain that is the right amount.
Yeah, the actual, here, can you turn right here? Oh, yeah. This is, here's the proposal right here. And if, here, let me move this up and over a little bit, right there.
Okay. That, that was not in our council packet. So, okay, now you.
There's the, the total. And then it talks about the, the snow gate. Here's the warranty. The end warranty would be 2023. And let's see, there's our hours on the machine we'd be getting. And the actual serial number of the one that we're talking about. Now, they do have the GP models, but those are, that's what we got last year was a 672GP, which was joystick control, which has a slope meter and all that. This machine would not have the joystick control. It'd be like the standard antler rack where you pull it back in your lap. And so, it's, it's what we currently have been using, other than the GP model that we got last year.
So, no, now by going this way, are we, we're kind of going to buying leased machines before? Are we hurting anybody or excluding local companies and bids and stuff now?
Not in this particular, that's why I say CAT bid on the Minnesota State bid in this same scenario when they were, they were quite a bit higher. Last year, when we went out for bids, the 672GP that we got, CAT bid at 12M, which is comparable to that 672. They were quite competitive in their bidding on that. But as far as used machines go, this, this is a, a very good deal.
Rob, we talked about warranty on that. Is that, is that able to be done in town? Or does it have to go to, to Ardeo in Sioux Falls? Or?
With this particular warranty, they, they come to us.
Okay.
And actually, this warranty has something that we don't have on our other warranty. And let's see, trying to find out where, where it's at, where they, what they call it. But it's a warranty where they actually inspect our machine on a regular basis. And it's, it's, it's.
Talking like a service contract, or maintenance contract.
Exactly. And they'll, they'll monitor our machine on a regular basis and make sure if they see anything happening, they're going to take care of it. We don't even have to report it to them. They're monitoring that machine. And now with JD Link is what it's called. It's a computer system where they're always linked with that machine. And they're able to monitor it over the internet and find out if there's any issues. So, it's, it's pretty impressive.
Does this price also include delivered to Watertown? Or do we have to pick it up?
Yep.
Yeah. Shelley, Shelley actually told me to pull this because she didn't want to talk snow till November 1st.
I don't want to talk snow either. So, I'm with you.
Now, and the hanky is the, is the gate that you are preferring. You're changing another one in there. And this will also allow us now to have three teams of gated.
Correct. The, the hanky snow gate, we, the first blade we got, which was the landfills blade, we used that in the winter. That came with a Ryland snow gate. And we are replacing that because we've had so many issues with it. And it's been bent so many times. We're putting a hanky on that. We did get a hanky last year on our 672GP. And that was, that gate performed really well. We didn't have any issues with it. It's, it's more forgiving. It has a spring system in it. So, if you hit the edge of a curb, it'll ride up on it rather than just destroy it. And so, we're replacing the one landfill blade's snow gate. And then we'll get a hanky for this one. And with these three teams that the mayor's talking about, we'll be able to cover the majority of Watertown now. We'll be able to go from 21st, 21st Street West all the way east to, just east of 19th Street, Dakota Commons, and up north, all the North Ridge and everything north of 14th Avenue there. And then down to Highway 212. So, we're picking up a lot more area with the snow gates.
So, you, you mentioned prior about having the size of the machine with the gate because one of them wasn't, didn't have enough.
Right. But we found, we got the two 672s. What, what they do, what the manufacturers do, our 672s have the same engine that the 772 does. And they're pretty similar on weight other than the, the circles that hold the mold board are built a little bit heavier. And then the board themselves are heavier. They run bigger tires. So, you have a little more weight there. But the, the, the power, the 672 is the same engine, but it's detuned. And to have it increased in power voids your warranty. So, that's how the manufacturers play these games with their equipment. They sometimes run the same, same engines, but they turn them up. You know, they, they pump them up. So, the machine itself, what we did notice last year, the 672s performed fine. But we did notice a difference between the 772 and the 672. Now, the horsepower numbers say that the new 672 model that we got last year has more power than our 10-year-old 772. You know, and the guys, when they get in them, they start plowing snow. If they're plowing in seventh gear instead of eighth, that's where they're saying they're noticing a difference. So, it does slow you down a little bit with the smaller machines, but they still function fine. We're, we're happy with the 672s. The 772, yeah, I'd like to, I don't want to shrink our fleet all down to the smaller sized machines. I'd like to keep some of the bigger machines in our fleet too. So. But with the prices of equipment going up so much each year, you know, this is a used machine. I know this, most communities aren't used to buying used equipment. But this is slightly used. It's been used one year by Sioux Falls. The warranty is incredible on this machine. Actually, this has more warranty than the brand-new 672 we bought last year. Because we got, I think we got a, let's see, it was a 4,000-hour warranty, but I forget the timeframe. It was, it was not as good as this warranty. So. But, and the other thing is, we still, if we wanted to, we still do have the option also. If we wanted to stay with the 672-sized machine, Ardeo will honor the contract from last year where we bought that other machine for the same price. But like I said, as of next month, those prices all go up by about $12,000. So, if we want to save some dollars, we can do something like this. Or if we wanted to go with the smaller machine, we could still get the same machine we got last year.
Yeah. And I think with the, the more roads that we're putting out there all the time, you just need, you need the bigger stuff.
Yeah. Like I say, I'm, I am a little concerned shrinking the whole fleet too much. I mean, it's, dollars do control that. But.
Right. Right.
Rob, this, this isn't a replacement, this is an addition?
It is. Right now, we'd keep the, the old Volvo we have for probably one season. We're still rearranging how we plow snow with the snow gates, but we would keep the Volvo for one season, then we'd probably surplus it out next year, which is our, our oldest blade.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Rob on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Number fifteen. Consideration of change order number two to the contract with Crestone Builders Incorporated for the Uptown Alley Reconstruction Project, increasing the contract amount one thousand, sixty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. I'll look for a motion, a second for discussion. Motion by Mike, Randy, I'm sorry, and second by Beth. Any questions on this? You want Shane to give you a little synopsis of what's going on? For a thousand bucks. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number sixteen. Consideration of change order number one, which is a final to the contract with Tyzac Concrete Incorporated for the Sidewalk Accessibility Improvement Project, increasing the contract amount nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents. I'll look for a motion, a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by Glenn. Shane, maybe you want to give us a little bit on this one?
Thank you, Mayor. We got such good bids from Tyzac this year that we wanted to make sure that we maximized our ability to do work. So, I consulted with Shelley, and we decided how much I could potentially add to the project and get it done, and so we, we just went after a little bit more of this work. Some of the additional dollars were work that we added. You know, we worked, added a piece of ADA handicap accessibility up on Nineteenth Street for a church, and we redid an ADA issue along one of the Mill and Overlay Projects alley approaches. So, that's the only new work that was added, other than we just went after a little bit more of our normal program.
Shane, just a question. Any idea why it's so much less than the engineer estimate was?
Tyzac, this is the only type of work they do. They go after big projects. They give you good bids, and they get work all over the country.
And it was very nice not to have the, the openings around the corners, and people running into them and not getting it done. This has just been a really, really nice year for this.
They are the most professional group to work with, with this kind of work. They come in, they get, they, they know what they're doing so well that they just systematically go through it. They have stuff that they tear out and replace in the same day at times, and, I mean, it's just a great company to work for. They know what they're doing, and they get it done in a timely manner.
Any questions? Hearing none, I will look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Number sixteen B. Highway grant for the police department. Ryan, if you want to come and give us a little rundown, what's going on here?
Thank you, Mayor. This past spring, I appeared in front of the city council and asked permission to push this button, and you guys granted me that permission. I asked permission to apply for a highway safety grant that we typically do every year. You guys granted us permission to do that. We chose to submit a grant in the amount of nineteen thousand, fifty-eight dollars, and we recently just received word that we were awarded that grant, and I need to accept it electronically here by the end of the week. So, I'm appearing now in front of you to ask permission to formally accept that and try to secure those funds.
Okay, Ryan, what I'm going to do is I'm going to look for a motion, a second for discussion purposes. Motion by Beth, second by Bill. Any questions yet for Ryan?
Give us a quick, once-over. This has been quite a while ago that we talked about it, without having to read the whole packet, so.
Gladly. What it is, is it's, it's something that we're going to do to focus on speed and seatbelt enforcement. We typically do this at intersections or segments of roadways where there are traffic accidents. We've had traffic accidents in the past. Sometimes those are around schools. It's for daytime use primarily. We generally assign our officers to do overtime enforcement funded by this highway safety grant funding. It's been, in the past, we've done it in two-hour chunks of time, so they might choose like eleven to one, if that's a busy time, at a certain location, or maybe three to five in the afternoon around a school or something. What this will do, it'll give us about five hundred and twenty hours of overtime, or about twenty hours a week. Kind of depends on who does the overtime. Some of our people earn more than others, but roughly five hundred hours. There is a soft match that's required with this, too. It's in the amount of twenty percent of the grant, and it doesn't cost the city any hard money. It's just that we need to assign one of our regular on-duty officers to do similar speed and seatbelt enforcement, and then we document that as such, and send that out to Pier along with the overtime.
I mean, he would do, you would have somebody doing it like twenty percent of the time on City Dollar, basically.
Essentially, yeah. It's worked out the number of hours that, for every hour that we spend on traffic enforcement, on overtime, we'd have to spend twenty minutes, or, I guess I, my math isn't that great, but twenty percent of it for...
So, Ryan, that, that's the state and local match amount that you're referring to, then?
Yes.
Is a soft grant?
Yes, and in our case, it would be a local match amount. It's a federal grant, so.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions we have for Ryan? None? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Hey, Ryan, I do, because I didn't want to ask a question because it wasn't pertaining to this. When did you guys switch the speed limit up from Fourteenth to fifteen miles an hour?
We're at a Fourteenth, right around the roundabout.
Yeah, east of the, or west of the roundabout, excuse me. I went through there the other day, and the flashing signs said fifteen. I thought, God, when did that?
Somebody got lazy putting the sign up, is what it was.
No, there's a sign up next.
Is there a real speed limit sign?
There's a real speed limit sign up there. It says fifteen, so.
It must have just changed in the last week or so. I saw the speed board trailer up there last week.
Yeah.
I thought maybe somebody just had the, didn't change the sign.
Well, that's what I thought, and then I come by there again, and it's like, oh, there's a speed limit sign there.
And you noticed Rob ditched us, too.
Yeah. You knew that was coming.
If they let me put up street signs, we'd have fun with that.
Should I call him and have him come back?
Tell him to get back.
Yeah, he may, yeah, Rob, get back here. I hadn't paid, I hadn't paid attention to that.
Yeah, it's, got to pay more attention, because I was going about thirty-five where it is every place else in that area.
Through the roundabout.
That must be why they have the speed trailer up there this week, too, so.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. Okay, any old business you need to discuss?
I've got one item, whether it's old business or a liaison report. At one of our meetings here probably about a month ago, the question came up about the Nineteenth Street leak, the water leak out there, and I think our feeling was, you know, it's negligible, probably forget about it. Well, I got, I got an email from, well, that was a conversation that we had at this meeting, but I got an email from Steve at the utility department. It's about a gallon a minute is what the leak rate is right now. So, I guess that sounds bad, but the good news is, it's substantial enough that with a listening device that they want to bring in, hopefully, they can, can pinpoint it now and find out exactly where that leak is. So, it is definitely getting worse, but like I said, that's, you know, not all bad news.
Mayor, just one item. The public hearing in Pier on Monday is being held for the Highway twenty, Twentieth Avenue intersection, and that hearing is to listen to the City of Watertown and others talk about the request to reduce the speed coming into town or just south of that intersection. Mayor, I think the mayor's going. I think Mike's going. I think Chief McPeak will be out there. I talked to Toby. He's going to go out there. So, there'll be good representation by Watertown out there. If you are interested, you can dial into that as a conference call as well.
Perfect. We'll be there. Any other old business?
One, I don't know if it's old business, or they're getting liaison, just like Glenn had, but the, I've been, been informed that the public restroom's downtown. We do have a leaky roof over there, so.
Yeah, we're well over it.
Oh, okay.
We need to look at it, yes. Yeah, because there's been some tile that has fallen down, and they're, yeah, they're working on that. Okay. Anything else? Any, any liaison member reports that haven't been talked about? Executive session, I do need to go into executive session this evening. I do not expect any, anything. This will be for contract negotiations, but I don't expect anything to, to come out of it this evening. So, I'll look for a motion, a second, and go into executive session. I got a motion by Bruce, second by Don. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in executive session. Thank you.